Okay, thank you. What I would suggest to the Planning Board members, you know, I believe everyone saw my email today that our, the, one of the Planning Board members, Teresa Capabianco resigned from the Planning Board, effective immediately or as, you know, as of tonight. So, Michelle, I would suggest as Vice Chair, I believe you're Vice Chair?
Yeah.
That you would run, you know, tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And then, you know, and then we can, you know, go accordingly, you know, with the agenda. And then, well, I can go through the process right now with, again, I think that I sent it to everybody. There were a lot of emails that went out of my office today, not just on this, but, so, I'm sorry if I'm repeating, but the Selectmen put together, or the Town Administrators Office put together a press release for the vacancy by the town charter. It's a joint appointment between the Planning Board, the remaining members of the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen. And we've done this at least once before, if not twice, where, where someone, you know, left, you know, during, while they still had time left on their term. So, in this particular case, there's a year left. So, the two boards would meet together, do interviews, and then select, you know, someone that, hopefully select someone, out of the, you know, whatever pool of people apply. And so, the Selectmen are suggesting, and this is how it was advertised, that because your meeting on the 18th, your next meeting is June 18th, that on the 17th, which lines up with the Selectmen's meeting, it would be the first thing on the agenda, June 17th, that you two, you know, that both boards would have a joint meeting and conduct the interviews, and, and, you know, hopefully, you know, reach a decision that evening, and then, you know, depending on the person's schedule, you know, hopefully they could come to the next, you know, meeting, the night, you know, your next meeting, which would be the night after. I mean, in a perfect world, that would be great, if the person could come that, you know, and I, and I think what we'll probably do is, as people start to apply or send in resumes, you know, we'll notify them that that's what the schedule is, that the interview would be on the 17th, and the Planning Board would be meeting on the 18th in June. Okay? And then, and then further on the agenda, I wrote it up, you know, assuming that we had a full board. Typically, after the election is when the, you know, Planning Board goes through all the subcommittees or committees, and also the election of offices for the board. And I would suggest that, you know, you wait until you have a full board to do that, and that's, you know, just a month away. So, so I would suggest that, but, you know, you proceed as you want tonight, but, but I think just initially, certainly for, you know, for the Vice Chair to run the meeting.
Okay. I haven't done it in a long time, so bear with me.
Just like design review, just on TV.
All right. All right, so then, okay, so we'll start with the Master Steering Committee update, which George is not here.
I, I had put a call into George, but I didn't connect with him.
Okay.
So, so, I mean, I figured if, if George wasn't going to be here between the three of us, you know, we could do an update.
Okay. Amy, do you wanna?
Sure.
Yeah.
The master plan, before I forget, actually, is meeting tomorrow night, on the 22nd, follow-up. At the last meeting about two weeks ago, we went through land use, open space, all the recommendations, transportation. So, tomorrow, we're gonna go through the recommendations for, oh, no, land use.
Yeah, land use, yeah.
Housing and economic development. So, but nothing really changed. At the last meeting, we didn't, we made minor changes with wording, but as far as I can see, nothing major was changed.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.
With the recommendations, and they're all online, so anybody in the audience who wants to look up the master plan and come tomorrow night, you're all welcome to town.
It will be here tomorrow night.
No, it's at the, oh, it is here, not at the library.
It is here. We couldn't get the library for, for like four different dates, I tried at the library, both rooms, excuse me, were booked. So, we're gonna be in here, snuggled tomorrow night.
And then Anthony, were you able to attend the last meeting?
I went, I was there for about half.
Okay. And then Carrie, did you?
I did, yes.
Okay. And you, so I would say the same for, what Amy said was, it was a productive meeting, it was a little bit more verbiage change, but not much. I think everything stayed the same, and we're productive, and now we're probably gonna get into the meat of housing, economic development, and wrap up the land use. Yeah? So, it's pretty good. Yeah?
And then, just in general, what we're looking to do is, hopefully, we'll, we'll finish out the recommendations tomorrow night. So, let's assume that we're going to, for right now. So, our schedule would be that, and then in about a month's time, they would, they, meaning the consultants, would have the first draft to the Master Plan Steering Committee to review of the master plan document. It, then, we haven't really figured out a meeting schedule yet for that, but then we, so we'd get comments back to them, they'd come back with a final document, and then, so that's gonna, you know, pretty much be throughout the summer. And then, in the fall, we'll look at scheduling a presentation to the, we'll probably, you know, we'll probably do it as a joint meeting, the Selectmen, the Planning Board, and, you know, we'll invite, you know, a variety of other board, we'll invite everybody, but, I mean, that's, the presentation will mainly, you know, be focused to the Planning Board and to the, to the Board of Selectmen. So, good.
And just a question, and then, when would it come to the Planning Board for approval? After that meeting, in the fall?
Well, the, that's up, you know, we, we can talk about that, how we wanna do that, because there, there's several kind of schools of thoughts on that. I mean, sometimes a Planning Board will sort of, you know, adopt the document, sometimes people bring it to town meeting, or they bring like an executive summary to town meeting. Most towns don't do that, because it's just such an incredible amount of information to try to do at a, at a town meeting. And then, so, so again, it's, you know, in the past, the Planning Board has never taken an official vote that this is the master plan, it's just, you know, they all worked on it, or, you know, the representatives worked on it, and it's just, it was, you know, given that that's, you know, we finished the contract, and that's the, the master plan.
So, was that your understanding as well, is how it would go to town meeting, or there are different schools?
Not mine, actually, 'cause at the beginning, when we talked about it, because George left the board, and there were Planning Board members who wanted to be on the board as a Planning Board member, Fran actually said, "Well, you guys have the final vote, so you can come to the meetings, and you'll have input, and then at the end, you have the final input." So, and I actually attended a master plan class, and I have the paperwork, but it does say the Planning Board, it's under their purview, and it comes to them at the end for approval, so.
Yeah, and, but again, you don't, there's no hard, fast rule, you know?
Right.
We, the Planning Board has never adopted it, the two that I've done, or three that I've done here, the Planning Board has never, you know, officially, or, you know, taken a stand and said, you know, you know, here's the master plan. It was just, it was understood that this was the project that we just completed, and, you know, and then we went into the, you know, each board went into the implement, implementation phase of it. So, you know, that's, that's, we can, you know, discuss that, you know, after the, the document is completed, however you wanna do this.
I also think, like, as we become to the nearing closure of each segment, like, if we have concerns about it as board members, we can sort of take it back here and maybe bring it back to them, you know, especially if you have concerns about housing or anything that we, I mean, economic development, I don't know if we would give a lot of input to, but I think over the summer, we can certainly give input back to, if any board members had.
No, you're, you're, once your recommendations are-
Final?
-completed, I mean, those are the recommendations that are, and the goals that are going into the master plan.
Okay.
You know, just as you, you know, all the goals have been adopted by the Master Plan Steering Committee, and then just about half the recommendations, you know, out of those goals, have, have been adopted by the Master Plan Steering Committee.
So, tomorrow is, when we finish it, it's almost like a 99% draft, it's almost completed at tomorrow's meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, the meat of what the Master Plan Steering Committee did was, you know, when, and, I mean, how we set it out and the whole, you know, the contract, was that the Master Plan Steering Committee would be, you know, goals and recommendations, and then, you know, the rest of the document is basically, you know, pure, you know, statistics, and, and the maps, and the demographics, and, and, you know, so that's what they're all working on, you know, and have been working, they, again, meaning the consultant. So, that's, you know, that's been continually, you know, worked on through this whole process. There's a whole team, you know, that we don't see, you know, that we have the two consultants, and then, I mean, there's been a couple that have, you know, shifted in and out of the meetings, you know, a couple additional ones, but, you know, there's a, there's a whole team back in Watertown that's, you know, been writing the document.
Okay, so if it comes back to us for approval, it would be after that joint meeting or before?
The, well, I, I mean, we can talk about that, you know, I'll, I'll talk about that with the consultants, and, and what, what they see as the typical process, you know, that they've done with other communities.
Okay.
Okay. So, if anyone would like to attend, it's tomorrow night, here at the Board of Selectmen's room?
Yes, yep, seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. Okay, great. All right, so, next on the agenda is 109 West Main Street. T. Shea LLC's up, and you guys are making a presentation. Can you remind me where this building's actually located? I'm trying to remember.
We're gonna get to that.
Okay, good, good.
Sure. First, I'm James Tager from Tops and Listeners Associates, representing T. Shea LLC, sitting over there. And what we have in front of you is a application for site plan approval for redevelopment of 109 West Main Street. And for some reference, next door at 113 is Hardrags and McCarthy Accountants, also a site run by these folks. Across the street is Coleman House. Right here is Tip Top Cleaners, right near the cleaner.
Choice.
And behind this are Condon Williams office roadway. Right before the applicant took, wanted to go to the property, it was a single-family house here, with a septic system and with a lot of junk on the property, and the applicant is proposing to clear all the land, regrade it, construct a 3,600 square foot footprint building, 40 by 90, with parking, both facing long and short sides, access off of Route 20. And the site, what you see represented here in green is what's gonna be graded in landscape. What you see, obviously, in the, in the gray is proposed paved surface, you've also got concrete block. We've already been in front of the ZPA for two variances for the position of the building, and I'll, and the reason, justification for position of the building is that because this is Route 20, the wonderful folks at Mass DOT essentially have a position now that you can't connect to our wonderful drainage system unless you prove to us that, that you have no other option whatsoever, except to connect to our wonderful drainage system. And so, you've gotta essentially show that you can't infiltrate. And we did a deep hole test over here, and we actually got a reasonable enough test result that we can, what, be captured from the roof, and on the parking, and a catch basin here, and two more catch basins here, will be run through a CDS stormwater filter unit, and then will be infiltrated into chambers, and we will not have a pipe connection to the state's sacred drainage system that they don't want anybody to interact with. But, the need to do that to satisfy Mass DOT is part of our justification to the zoning board appeals for why the building is in the back. We, as I say, we refer to zoning board appeals, asking for a couple of variances for the building position and for the setback, and we were just recently in front of the Earthwork Board, they could not close their process, because their standard is that they only will issue their permit after other boards have done so, so continue with those folks. But, the site is 25,000 and change square feet, it's located entirely in the downtown business zoning district. The, just briefly on the traffic, everyone knows that there's a huge traffic, existing volume on Route 20. The ITE, International Transportation Engineers, standard for office space of this type is 10 trips per thousand square feet. This is, which effectively says this is generating 36 trips per day. An existing house is typically expected to generate 10 trips per day, so it's really only a net increase of 26 trips, which is, is very small in the context of, obviously, of the Route 20 traffic. It's a position that has very good site distance in both directions, there's no issue there. There is existing sewer service and water, which will be extended into the property. The house actually had a septic system still, I don't know how that was running, but we're gonna have this building served by sewer rather than a kind of like, you know, this septic system. The grade is, the intention, this grade goes up, I have to just talk quickly about the existing grades. You're at elevation, find the number, 308, at the curb line here. At the back of the property, you're at 324. So, this, this is one continuous rise from 308 to 324. And the property behind us is higher still, behind a, a red wall. And what we're proposing is just a 5% rise up, then to parking spaces, and it, it moderates out further, so it's less than 5% has to be to go through handicap spaces. We beat the, 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 by Los Haters, where there's a parking spaces, we've got two handicap spaces on the 14, which you actually won't, technically have got one. We were in front of also the Design Review Committee meeting for a few different meetings to go over, and we went through quite a bit of moving around, plantings and shrubs and trees from our initial proposal to what they thought would be the best for the site, we're fine to go along with it. The landscaping plan in the site plans was arrived at through their specific input and direction in a few instances. So, I know there was, I think, some comment about what trees are proposed, and, and we just worked with what the Design Review Committee required us to do. Again, 'cause we initially had proposed something a bit different, and they said, "No, we want you to do this." We're doing what they, what they want. So, and just to touch quickly on a couple other things, I know in the, in the, the development impact analysis, we touched on traffic impact. As far as environmental impact, you've got a run water protection overlake district boundary running through about a front third of the site, and to satisfy the requirements thereof, here, we would've done this anyways to deal with Mass DOT, but for that reason, we're, that's another reason to have done the infiltration. But, we're not, we don't have any wetlands on-site, or within 100 feet of this site. Again, you've got across Route 20, you've got Coleman House, and somewheres beyond that is the asset river, but we're not within 100 feet of any, of any wetland resource area on this property. As far as fiscal impact, you've looked at just comparing the similar property next door, the valuation of it to the valuation that the single-family house had, the lot, the property would be expected to increase the town's tax revenues about 5,000 and change dollars every year over what it was getting from, from the single-family house. As far as the, the general rubric of community impact, again, the down, this was, was a single-family home in the downtown business zoning district. This would be a, an office use building next to another office use building, next to cleaner and bank. It's, you know, it's in fitting with those uses, and the folks who are proposing this in Stone Ridge, they, they did the, again, the nice, handsome building next door, and they have a record, I think, with the town of keeping their sites in good condition and doing a good job with them. I know they went through, again, the very exacting design review process, for exactly how that building, they look like, the materials, colors, et cetera, and I think they just got the permit from that board to satisfy them, but, again, I would just, the greatest guarantee is that these folks have a nice record of keeping their sites in good condition and making them look, look nice. Be positive impact toward this, toward the town. And it'd be a very positive impact for the change from previous years. Now, I wanna just touch quickly on, Kathy had relayed a, a comment in regard to buffer. And you've got a residential use back here, the condos off of Grove Way, and these folks are up at elevation 325, 326. This building here is down, proposed floor area of 316 and change, so it's, it's just a little less than 10 feet below them. And it's actually just a little less, about six inches or so, maybe lower than the building on the adjacent property. And I, having the board next to me here, this is the view, if you're standing about the middle of this site, looking uphill. And I just wanted to show you, you've got this wall, which is reflected here on the plan, you've got fencing, you've got plantings, but, again, this property is, in this, in the area right next to this building, is maybe about 10 feet lower than behind here. And there's not much you can do when you're already 10 feet lower than your abutter to shield yourself from that abutter. You know, a, a 10-foot-high fence, we get up to the foot of somebody standing in the backyard there, you know, how much more is that worth? So, we would ask for a waiver in regard to that specific provision of a 25-foot buffer, 25-foot buffer, excuse me, towards an abutting residential property, because I think the topography indicates that it makes sense in this instance, 'cause there's just not much you can do with, like, these effects, and to shield this front folks here. Again, Condon Williams over here, you've got a second-floor window, that's a second-floor after you're already, again, we're 10 feet above, 10 feet of elevation difference from here to here. There's just not much you can do on, on this property to, you know, lessen invisibility from, from that front. Again, I think the best thing that the developer of this site will do for, for folks there is that Stone Ridge, again, has an excellent record of keeping their properties in good condition, maintaining them well, having them worked with, and I think that's, in a real way, is the best guarantee that, that having, that he can use next door will not be a serious effect on the folks here. But I'll try and answer any questions. We got the town engineers letter. I don't think we have any objection to any of his comments, but if there's any questions, I'll try and answer.
Okay. So, I, I see the letter in front of me, and he also has some recommendations of additional conditions. Are you in agreement with all Fred's conditions that he's asked you to do?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Kathy and Fred, did you wanna weigh, you know, weigh in on the waiver that, is that the waiver through this board that they're requesting?
Yep.
Do you wanna talk about that, make a suggestion, or are you in agreement with it, or?
Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll make a comment on that, and I also think there's another waiver that you need to request, based on the-
Assad.
-building inspectors, zoning determination about, there is a, it's in section 7-09-030 C4A1, which talks about that around the parking spaces, when you have over five parking spaces, there should be a 10-foot width buffer strip around the parking spaces, and, and again, where this, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna make the, the case for them, but pointing out that, that a buffer would all, I mean, a waiver would also be, need to be required, 'cause I don't think-
We actually have 10 feet from this space to the property.
Okay, and what about on the-
We have 10 feet over here as well. These are, this is the driving aisle, I don't know if that still counts, parking spaces.
Let me check on, okay, Fred will double-check on that, so, all right, so you may not need that waiver. And then, yes, Amy, the, the third one, Amy had pointed out in an email that she sent to staff, that she sent to Fred and I today, about the building placement. And that is in section, everything is in section 09. So, it's 09, 02, 0D1, and it talks about that the, you know, that the building needs to be placed, you know, the, the preferred placement of the building is so that it's facing the street, like the building that's, that Tim built next to, next door, and, but that the, but that the Planning Board may grant a waiver after consideration by the Design Review Committee. And so, the Design Review Committee, and I had, and James, I don't know if you, or Tim, I don't know if Debbie had passed these out before I came in here, but there's just a memo from the Design Review Committee, and Michelle, I don't know if you wanna go into more detail about that, but I just outlined from the Design Review Committee the four meetings at which this project was discussed, and the Design Review Committee met with the owner, the, you know, Mr. Shea, his architect, Dan Wesniak, and then also James Tatro. And at the final meeting, the Design Review Committee voted to recommend to the, you know, Planning Board for approval of the placement of the building, you know, the design of the site, landscaping, site plan, you know, everything that the Design Review Committee reviews.
Okay.
So, but it is up to the Planning Board to grant that waiver.
If I could just briefly speak up regarding placement, you know, the, the adjacent lot is actually a lot that widens out, and made it much easier to have a building facing the road. You know, the building proposed is well under what you're allowed in the downtown business for your floor area ratio. You know, we're not, the applicant isn't being pickish and asking, asking for a 3,600 square foot building, but this is, it's about 94 and a half to 95 feet wide in this location. It's really too close to be, to be reasonable, to have this building face the road. I know the objection would be, "Well, then why don't you make it deeper and more of a square or something?" But, this, that's just not as, as, I guess, you could say, as efficient a shape of, of the building.
Right.
And, and again, you know, this placement was, as, as Kathy was saying, reviewed by the Design Review Board, and, and in the course of the zoning board appeals hearing as well.
Yep. So, typically in design review, we start off with that first, it's three meetings. The first is a preliminary meeting where we sit down and say, "Okay, here's a lot," and, you know, "How, we're gonna position the building on the lot." And so, that's where you found a very long rectangular narrow lot, that would make it more difficult to put it up front, and then how do you get things behind it, for the parking behind it, and then you're looking for safety and all that. So, then, that's when we started to push it further back, and then we look into other things like landscaping, and like you said, connecting to the sewer and the DPW, I mean, the state requirements of coming off of Route 20. And then we tweaked that a little bit on the other ones, and then the final meeting is just sort of the blessing of everything, where, you know, these are the building materials you're gonna use, the more of architectural rendings of the project. But in the first meeting is usually where we discuss with any applicant, is where you're going to position the building, depending on the lot. And this is, like you said, a very long, narrow lot. It's, the lot next door is much wider, and it would've made nonsense if you have, if you're actually traveling down Route 20, you would see this building that's already set back, and then you got one in the front, and then you got one back. It just would've had like a zigzag approach to positioning the buildings, and it wouldn't have looked right. So, having said that, we agreed to push it back. I know that the, the applicant does own the property next door, looks great. You got a nice white fence there, which looks great, but we asked maybe to take that fence halfway down, so it blended it together. Yeah?
Yes.
We can't require that, because it's two different properties, but, yeah.
The fence was put up to shield the, the new use of 113 from the residents next door, it was in disrepair.
Yep.
So, it was, it started as a temporary thing, 'cause we had hoped to develop more things in Northborough-
Right.
-that in the site next door.
Right. And even when you look at, and so, further, I think the next property over from the cleaners is Marlboro Savings Bank, isn't it?
Right.
So, even when you look at them, they've got a little bit of a retention prong in the front with some, I mean, even their building isn't really up close, it's much further back, because they had to deal with a retention prong, and then some issues right there. So, you don't have like a perfect flush effect, of where you've got these natural flow of these commercial buildings along Route 20, had to, you know, there, these, these specific lots are a little bit quirky in nature, and of this one, of all of them, I think probably similar to the cleaners, is almost the most long and narrow lot. So, it's hard to take a building and put it there and turn it around face, frontwards. If you get into a square, you're getting into second stories, and it gets, becomes very cost prohibitive and more difficult to build there. You know, then you- You know, then you have a lot of wasted space in the lot.
So, Michelle, what, Fred was able to look that up quickly, thank you. So one of the waivers that I had mentioned that they possibly would need about the ten-foot-wide buffer strip around the parking, they do not need that.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a language in that section of the bylaw that it applies to parking spaces and not to the access aisle. So it's the, so it looks like from our review that it's the two waivers. So for the placement of the building, and as we, you know, get further along tonight, I'll give you the sites for those, but the placement of the building, so that it's not, the front of the building is not parallel to the street, and then the twenty-five-foot buffer between a business use and a residential use. And then, I don't know if you want to have Fred go through this review letter?
Do you want to go through that? Yep.
Do you all have that?
Yep. Do you guys have the letter?
Yep.
Yep.
I want to say if he's agreeing to everything.
Yep.
The first comment I had was about the groundwater portion on the site, and the applicant has adequate area, and because the building is proposed to be professional or office, he is in a zone that's allowed by right. He is providing recharge, which we would have requested anyway. The-
We took the dumpster off the, they're gonna, the second one, because they're gonna, you guys are gonna do waste disposal without, Kathy said.
We gotta talk about that.
Yep. That was, that was my mistake.
Waste disposal.
It's, I, I own it.
You got room to put it somewhere?
We had, we had it on the plan.
Yeah.
Up until design.
We, we put it in, and then we'd be told, you might want to take it out, so we took it out. And then the next meeting-
We probably still have a plan on that.
Well, it was, it was my, it was my advice, my misunderstanding, my advice to the, yeah, but I, just so that they understand, to the design re-
Next door, we, we put in the cement pad, the screening.
They don't use it.
There were CPAs, they shred everything.
Yeah.
Because it's, and so it's never been used, but we can do another dog kennel next door, and if they use it-
To Little Eastman, they can walk over and use that.
Right, exactly, yeah.
No, it's just, we-
That, the regulations call for waste disposal provisions, and just need to add a dumpster somewhere, so.
Yep.
It could be a small one, apparently, if you get another. Then I was, in reviewing the plan, there were some things that jumped out at me. The plan is not tied to the town's data, we reference the nineteen twenty-nine data, the town's JIS system, eighteen-eighty-eight, so there'll need to be a conversion, at least at the time that the ASBIL plan is submitted, so that all final documents are on the town's data. There was no operation and maintenance plan in the application that I reviewed. I wasn't sure if I just elected to get it, or you didn't submit one at all. But there'll need to be one, especially where there's no overflow connection to the state storm drain.
Okay. Yep.
And some conditions in the operation and maintenance plan require annual reporting, and two, at least two permeability tests in the area of the infiltration system in order to verify that the rates that were assumed in the drainage analysis are actually attainable. And then the ASBIL plan, which we always request, and I wanted to explain that they did appear before the earthwork board, but no permit will be issued until, from that board until the hearing is closed for their site plan. Just in order to keep everyone proving the same plan. And the, we're looking for some details on the retain wall. I think it was below the four feet in North Area, about all, but still wanted you to put some details on the plan.
Pad that down with the applicant, just to what style of wall do you want to use?
And then there's a water and sewer connection permit. There's already permit, there's already a connection for water, but we have to upgrade that or not extend that. I don't know how old. And then, just looking for trench detail on how the water and sewer services are going to get to the building. And then I asked for a copy of the mass DOT access permit that you must have already obtained, if you've had discussions with them, just forward a copy to the DPW.
Okay.
And then, Michelle, if I could just add one thing for the board members. At the ZBA meeting, there was a question from one of the, a concern and a question from one of the abutters. And the zoning board of appeals asked me to review it, but it was really more appropriate for the planning board, having to do with the, with the site plan. So there was a, and I don't remember what abutter, it doesn't matter, but there was a, an abutters concern that they, they, they stated that there had been a lot of loitering at the accountant's building in the night, and that there were cars that parked behind, and there were people and noises and so forth. So I checked with the police department, and the police chief had one of his officers go back two years for any calls or problems along, actually from, from Marlborough Savings Bank to Westbrook. And there was not a single incident that was ever called in about, about any of those properties. So I just wanted to let, let you know that.
It's been a tough tax season.
I honestly think sometimes a patrolman might use that as an area to see-
Monitor the traffic.
See how the traffic's going and so on, and then-
Monitor.
They don't even think about it, and then they go to the next place, they, you know, there's some routine.
Yep.
But the, but just to, you know, to set, you know, that straight, that there's, there's never been any calls to the police department about that property, nor investigation from the police department to anything happening at that property.
Okay. And overall, the feedback was positive from the ZBA, everyone was happy?
Yes, the, the ZBA, I mean, there were, there were a lot of questions from the abutters, and I, at least a couple of them are here tonight, no?
Yep.
Oh, okay. But, so they were advised to, you know, come to the planning board meeting, and they were all notified of tonight's meeting. But, yeah, the ZBA had, you know, issued, had granted the variances that were necessary. There was two variances for the-
Did the abutters have an issue with, you know, within the twenty-five-foot setback? Do they have any issues with that?
I don't, I don't know if that came up or not. And we did talk there again also about pointing out the elevation difference between the two sites, and that, you know, the ground behind them is going to be just short of ten feet higher than the ground next to this building here. And they're gonna, to some degree oversee this no matter what we do.
Right.
You know, I don't know what we thought you would plant that's going to shoot up twenty-five.
Because they're on the hill up there.
Solid curtain.
From what I recall, there was one or two abutters that, that did, as James said, they were, they were concerned about, or they asked questions about, you know, cars pulling in, and wouldn't that be shining into their, you know, I, I, yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how those units are set up, so I don't know if they're, it's like a finished basement or something.
Yeah.
But then, again, it was pointed out that, you know, it's at least ten feet above the site, so there couldn't be headlights.
You know, this, again, this is a picture that Nick Muscato took just today, I believe. You know, this is, this is the unit that's over here, the one, you know, and, you know, they've got fencing, they've got plantings, et cetera. They really do have a pretty good shield of their first floor as seen from the back. And one just quick point in regard to that issue of, you know, of loitering, people being behind buildings, et cetera. One of the benefits that we pointed out of this layout and this position is that it makes essentially everything visible from Route 20. So it discourages anybody from coming in and loitering through the most likely, because they're all going to be visible from Route 20.
And how about earthworks? That was fine?
The presentation was fine, but they opted not to close the hearing because of Kathy's suggestion.
Okay.
So the plan that they approved is what involved-
Okay. Okay, great. All right. So if we can hear from the other committee members. Amy, you've got your paperwork out.
I already have. My first question is, where's the snow going to go?
Snow storage is going to be off the, off all the edges here, and here especially, because you don't want to pile heavy, heavy snow over the chambers, but this side here, above this, above the chambers on this side, off the edge here, and it can do a little bit off the edge here, but primarily they're going to, somebody's going to have to come in and put it down to this side. And again, off, off the edge here.
The other question I had is, was it design review's idea, or the engineers' idea to push it that far back? Because to me, it looks like you could push it like twelve feet forward, and then you have your-
We were very close to the dry cleaner.
Yep.
And they went a bit-
Yeah.
They were just too close, you know, to see.
I was just wondering the reasoning, yeah. Because then I thought it could be less of a grade in the back, and you'd have your buffer.
The dry cleaner, this is the back corner of their building right here.
Yep.
And they're literally a foot and change off the property line, and we didn't want to be beside them because they're so close already.
Yeah.
Is it like fire reasons and stuff?
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, I was just curious, whose idea was what that was.
Yeah.
And another question I had was, I don't know if it was, was it design review and the engineers to put the stone up near the building instead of mulch? You know, usually like, I've seen all the other-
Oh, yeah.
Have the mulch.
Oh, that was designer.
And why was that?
Well, usually when you, it's sort of a fire safety thing, when you put the mulch up against a building-
Right.
And if someone is, what?
There's a sidewalk in between, isn't there?
It was, design review believed that people would have a tendency to walk from the parking spaces across the mulch to the sidewalk, instead of walking up the park-
I know, to me, like, the buildings all around have mulch.
So they recommended that we did that, that piece of stone, because people would have a tendency to walk across it, instead of walking across the wall.
I think the mulch looks better. Because if you look, there was one building that used the stone.
Yeah.
And the plants don't seem to thrive there. So I think, to me, I mean, I think the mulch adds more to the landscaping and-
We get stuck in the middle between the trees of one board.
Right. I know. That's why I was wondering if it was your idea or theirs. I'll have to start going to more design review, I guess, if I have comments. Yeah, I don't know. So Michelle, you think stone is better there?
Do we go back and forth on that a lot?
No. You recommended the stone.
Yeah.
There, there was, and there was a question about what kind of stone, but it was, you all agreed with the stone.
Because your other building has mulch.
All right.
All the other ones. So I mean, if I had to, I would recommend the mulch and the plants, because the buildings down the street that have all the rocks, none of the plants survived.
So we, so was the-
We'll never be able to compete with that, one of the speakers.
Yeah. Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Right. And they have stone, so that's why I'm a little leery.
More be a factor, because what they had doing-
Yeah.
So I don't know. I think if you want to do mulch, I'd be good with mulch. And, let me see. Some snow, I asked about the rocks. Are there any catch basins, or is it just the infiltration in the-
There are three.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There is one proposed over here.
Yep.
And two more down here. And this is just basically as low as we could go and still get to be able to discharge into the chambers. Otherwise, we would go even lower. And as the compare, it works drainage-wise because the existing house and its driveway has, there's no infiltration, and it just would bleed off into the street, and so you're comparing that house and that area to just this much. And that is a, is a reasonable comparison. That's, we're still less than what was going there before, but we could, just couldn't get any more.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Carrie.
So, yes, a dumpster, that was decided, that's going in there.
No problem.
Yep. And, what, did you say there already was a water and sewer connection, or not yet?
What is the status of those?
There's a water connection.
And water, and the sewer lateral.
Yes, the sewer-
Two town actually just repaired it.
The sewer's not connected at this time. The house that was there was not connected to the sewer.
Okay.
It was a subject system.
Okay.
It's lowly connecting the new building.
And then that's what, and the permits are, that's what leads to, they'll get a permit before everything else can be done. Okay, that makes sense.
Permit and a better man and a trench to the top.
Okay, great. And then one other, oh, a comment, actually. You submitted a development impact analysis?
Yep.
I really like this, thank you for doing this. I thought this was really helpful, I hadn't seen this before, and I really appreciate this effort.
I think it's something I didn't have to do, did I?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was like, wait a minute.
Good job.
Well, anyway, I appreciated it, thank you. And then also, in terms of mulch or stone, I went to some design review committee meetings, but I don't think I was at that one. One of the meetings, though, I went to was about a firewall. Was that determined, where that, does that go somewhere in here?
I think that was involving the dry cleaner and-
If we had moved the building closer to the-
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then it was determined that we were a safer, a safer distance away than, that wasn't a necessary-
So no need for a firewall? So, and if mulch is better, I mean, I think, I'm okay with that, too. I don't, you know, it's-
Yeah, I'm not really sure. Maybe somebody can help us. Who should we, which way should we-
The planning board is the, is the granting authority.
Okay.
So if we all want mulch, we're okay with mulch.
You know, honestly, sometimes we feel caught.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know, we don't want to say, oh-
To be honest, I can't, I cannot remember the conversation we had between mulch and stone, but I don't know.
I did, yeah, I, but I think, as Nick had said, I think it was about people, the comments were, and you were all in agreement with it, but, I mean, that's just how you arrived at it, was that people would, you know, I mean, all of us, right? You cut through something.
Right.
You go to the easiest path of least resistance, I guess. So people were thinking that people would be cutting through the mulch, and it would end up trashing the mulch.
Okay.
So if there were stone there, like riverstone or whatever, you know, it would deter people from walking across the stone, and that you would actually go where you're supposed to walk.
Right.
And other sites, I mean, you find that people use the actual real walkways, and it's fine, you know, we don't have this.
I mean, the planning board is the, you know, and this, there's not a special permit associated with this, but, I mean, you know, the planning board is the, the, you know, site plan approval authority.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's whatever you vote or say.
Good. Okay.
Okay, and then in terms of lighting, I'm not sure, is, is it properly lit or overly lit or anything? So obviously with the neighbors back there, are there any concerns with lights that are too high up, or anything that's going to be flashing into there?
We, we had a photo electric, it was done.
Yeah. The applicant shows that all the lighting stays on the property.
Oh, great, okay.
They have, they have that professionally done. There's a lighting plan.
Oh, great, okay.
It doesn't spill off the property.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
And it, I mean, if, if you guys, if you guys can comment on it, but I, but I, if I remember correctly, that everything is under the, you know, it's either on the building or under the-
Oh, great.
The walkway.
Okay.
So there aren't any freestanding poles, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. That's all I have.
Yep.
So my initial thought was that building is, it seems very far back, but I think it's been addressed quite well. And I think, obviously, this, anything on this property is going to be an improvement to what it was, so I, I think this is going to be a good thing, and it's going to be, you know, it's going to go in with the area with the other businesses in that area, so I think that's a great thing. I, just the only question, I don't know if it was brought up, signage? I noticed in one images, the signage is right on the, oh, so there is one up front.
Yeah, I'm sure the location of a sign beside the curving of the-
Okay.
Will that be internally lit or externally lit? I can't remember what we decided.
Not internally.
But ex, okay, yeah.
Similar to what's next door?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I had nothing further. I had nothing further.
Okay, I had one more question that I thought I had to ask, cause, um, I was looking at the trees and I know design review went through the trees. I sent something to Kathy and maybe I have to go back to design review with this, but, um, cause I was involved with the town comment. I was looking at different trees and talking to Tower Hill and I know someone who knows an arborist. And, um, they said if you're doing street, streetscaping along the main street, you wanna get away from pears. And I actually looked these up and they're four pear trees because it's actually an invasive plant now. And, um, I don't know if it would affect this, but, um, they recommended like more of like a maple or an elm or, I don't know how you guys feel about that or... Who picked the trees?
I think, and, and...
It'd be more Michelle and design review.
Yeah.
I think that some of the discussion with the, uh, design review committee was that, uh, I think you have pears next door.
Yeah.
And, and the discussion was, well, why don't you, at where the trees were suggested, why don't you use the, cause they have fairly nice looking trees next door, why don't you use the same thing and continue that motif? Uh, but...
Has Dave been going to the meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, maybe I'll go to the next one, but I just wanted to figure out why that we're using pear trees.
It might be concerned, too, if you, if you have trees that can get to be eighty feet high.
Right, right.
Yeah, like a maple, you're not gonna get that with a calorie pear. It's the first I heard about that with calorie pears.
Yeah, and if you look it up, it says that all the arborists are recommending against it. And they said to stop using them. So, I was just curious why design review...
They're survivors.
We, uh, we could certainly talk to Dave.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that.
At our next meeting, um, or the, or the DRC's next meeting. Um, but, but this was, and actually the des- the landscape had, had been changed a couple times.
Yeah.
Um, through Dave's comments. Um, and then this is what was finally, you know, arrived at and agreed by the, by the design review committee, so, um...
So, I think the only change we'll make, and thank you, Amy, is the mulch. We'll come into agreement with the mulch, if that's okay. I don't, the, the design review committee will be disappointed over that. I think we just decided on that because of, we thought human behavior would mean that they would walk over. But done a nice job and no one seems to walk through your garden, so, be good. Okay. So, um, if someone can make a motion to approve this, that would be great. And there's no, we have two waivers?
Two waivers.
Two waivers?
Yeah, I have the specific sections which, you know, whether you wanna read them into the motion or I, I can just, I'll put them into the decision, obviously.
Just point of order, if there's any public comments or...
Oh, yeah, is there anyone from the public here, other than the applicant?
It's a one-story building.
It is, yeah.
If you do what it was, it's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, I know.
Even now it is, right?
Yeah.
Even now it is, too.
It is, yeah.
All right.
Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion and then either Kathy can give you the waivers to read off or we'll just ask to include the two waivers that the applicant is asking for.
Okay, I make a, I'm trying to look for the address.
Um, one oh nine, yeah.
So, basically, your motion would be to approve...
The site plan.
Right, the site plan, you know, as presented, um, and then with, um, uh...
The waiver for the side.
Conditions outlined by the town engineer and then the, um, uh, the two waivers.
Two waivers and the only change to the design review would be to have mulch versus stones?
Dumpster.
And the dumpster.
Yep.
So moved.
You got that or you wanna?
Sure.
Get a little checklist, there's...
I got my checklist.
Two waivers, dumpster, mulch.
All right. So, I make a motion to approve one oh nine West Main Street site plan application as presented with recommendations from engineering with the following two waivers. Uh, placement of the building and also a twenty-five foot buffer between a business use and recreational use. Additionally, with the design, with the, uh, change of a dumpster, which actually I did think was in the letter, but that's okay. And the mulch, change from stone to mulch.
Yeah, I think the dumpster is in Fred's, um, review letter, yeah.
Oh, it is.
Out of the, uh, I mean, voice, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanna save the pear tree, so I can put in something better.
Heard of that, so that's interesting, yeah.
I only started looking, cause we're looking.
Yeah. So, um, next is consideration of minutes, which we don't have.
Correct, I wasn't able to, um, um, finish them.
Okay.
So, we'll have those for your next meeting.
Okay.
And, um, the, um, the Newton Street, can I give you an update?
Yep.
Is that why you're here?
Yep.
Um, the, um, at, at the, at the next meeting, um, let me back up, I'm sorry. Um, I believe that I emailed it to, and this was, would have been probably at least a month or so ago, but I can, um, I have other copies that I can hand you tonight. Anthony, if you wouldn't mind just taking one and passing those down. But, um, if, if people recall, and I, and I actually, I myself don't recall if we've had a discussion about Newton Street since Carrie and Anthony have been on the board. Okay, so, a real quick background, because we'll give you a lot of background at the next meeting. But, um, a real quick background is, uh, there's a, a good portion of Newton Street that has been widened and has a base coat of pavement on it. And that was all a result of negotiations that the planning board did with a, um, a resident of North Row who's also a developer. Um, his name is Ziad Ramadan. And in order for him to, um, develop frontage lots, you know, A and R lots on Newton Street, Newton Street needed to be improved and brought up to minimum town road standards. So, um, very long story and long process. Uh, there was a, uh, there's a road plan that the engineering department and the DPW, um, approved. And, um, a bond was, um, determined to, the, the planning board agreed to have the developer post a bond to ensure that the work was completed. And the project was divided into two phases, phase one and phase two. Phase one has been completed as far as the, the road has been, you know, it's from a certain station to a certain station, that the road had to be, um, improved, some ledge taken out. And, um, uh, excuse me, widened, and then a base coat of pavement was put down. Um, that allowed the developer to go forward with some of his lots. In the meantime, another, uh, another piece of property on the opposite side of the street became, um, uh, available, uh, came up for sale. Another developer purchased it and, um, divided the property into four lots and renovated the existing house. And the planning board allowed him access to the existing house, but, um, put, this was all under the scenic road bylaw for both of these gentlemen. So, the, the second developer, um, was held to the same standards as the, as Mr. Ramadan. In that the, uh, the planning board said you can't develop any of your, uh, you know, your three additional lots until you also participate in, in improving the road and, and finishing the road. So, at the planning board meeting at that particular time, the two developers were here, they agreed that they were both going to, you know, um, contribute equally or, or, um, and not as in half, but, you know, based on the frontage of the road they had. So, the, they were sent to, you know, go away, work out their numbers, they agreed in here that they would do it. They left and, you know, their deal fell apart as far as who was going to pay for what and, but it's a private matter. So, we, as a town, have bond, uh, you know, we're holding a bond from the, um, original developers, Ziad Ramadan. And the, what we're going to do now is work with town council and determine what the exact process is, is to acquire that bond for the town. It, 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 there's a very straightforward process when it's a subdivision bond. This isn't a subdivision bond, so that's why we need to have town council involved. So, between now and the next meeting, we're gonna work with town council to, um, start the process of, of calling the bond, is what it's officially called. So, calling the bond and then what the town would then do is use the, the proceeds of that bond to finish the roadway and put the top coat on. Um, and so that the road, you know, does not deteriorate any further and that the, you know, that this project, as far as this road improvement, um, project is done. As part of the, the, the due process of this, you have to give the developer, you know, time to, you know, you have to notify him that the town is going to, um, take the bond, you know, unless he's able to, you know, complete his end of the, of the bargain. Um, so, town council will give us the information as far as how many days that is. Um, whether it's, you know, we don't know, whether it's forty-five days, sixty days. Um, but, you know, then we'll notice the, um, the developer, um, let him know that. And then, this is all assuming that you vote to call the bond. We're, we're assuming you'll go along with staff's recommendation, but, um, so DPW is just very concerned that, you know, if we go another winter with this road, that the base coat, you know, the work that's been done is going to deteriorate. And we're gonna, kinda have to start from scratch, you know, from the beginning. And we don't wanna do that. So, we just want to, we as a town wanna be done with it. The residents, who, some of them are here tonight, um, you know, have lived with this road for, you know, or lived with this whole project, this, this whole, you know, for several years now. And, um, so, the letter that you have in front of you is, um, uh, whether you, a, a letter, a petition or whatever, but, you know, it's, it's from the, um, residents of Newton Street that are affected by this road. Um, you know, asking the, the town to take action to get that road completed. So, myself, Fred, DPW director, you know, we've met a couple different times on this. Um, Fred and Scott are gonna work further on it to determine, you know, exactly what is left to be done. Um, we'll, you know, we're gonna be in touch with town council and then we'll have the process outlined for you at the next meeting. So, at the next meeting, we'll, you know, notify the, uh, butters again and we'll also notify the, uh, developer, um, you know, to, to attend the, you know, his choice, whether he wants to attend the meeting or not.
So, do you need a vote at all tonight?
Not tonight. I just wanted to bring you up to sort of just, you know, give you a summary of what we've, you know, been doing, you know, kinda behind the scenes or in between meetings. And, um, and, you know, where we hope to be at, at your next meeting. And, um, so it's anticipated at your next meeting that we would have you, um, take action to, to call the bond. And as, again, as part of that process, the developer will get X amount of days to finish it. And then if he doesn't, then, you know, the, the town would take the money.
Okay.
Just a question. Yeah, so, say, does someone inspect the job to make sure it's done up to a certain standard or...
Yeah.
Okay.
That would all be, I mean, the, the town's been doing it all along anyways. Um, when, um, the, the, the DPW, I mean, both Fred and the, um, uh, DPW director have been out there while it was first being done, um, you know, the road widened, the, like I said, some of the ledge was removed. It's been a long process.
It started at my first meeting.
Yeah.
We spent that whole summer five years ago.
Your very, really?
That was my first meeting, yeah.
Yeah. So, Kathy...
You'll probably like, what the heck am I doing?
And it took like all, all summer.
Looking down the line, if we actually called the bond, right, um, would the town be able to do the work this year before winter? Okay, so we call the bond and then the town is gonna do, get the work done and, okay, good. So, the residents could expect before winter to have that street completed. Yep, to, um, the standards that we have now in place.
Yep, it's minimum town road standards is, is what the road is brought up to.
That's good, okay. Any questions for you, Amy, or...
Nope, not on that.
Support?
Yep, I support that.
Yep. Anthony?
I'm good.
You're good? Carrie?
I'm good, I support that.
And any comments from the public, residents?
Public would just love to have some action on that.
I bet you would.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there anything you think about the actual property beyond the road? Because the two developers have gone in there and gouged the whole place up. Um, the trees have been knocked down, there's the stone and dirt and weeds and, uh, seating, my one is in a seating, is it one's...
Well, one of them actually just sold off his property with all the lots to it, so I expect that the new owner coming in.
Who was that?
Oh, um, Ziad's property or, or the Gustafson's property?
Um, I thought maybe it was his property?
Ziad's property?
Yeah.
Oh?
Lots, I can tell you more at the next meeting. Yep. So, maybe something will happen then.
Maybe some action will happen there?
Yeah, I thought it was that property.
Before the snow flies, something's gonna happen one way or another.
Yeah, I mean, at least by winter, you'll have a new road.
Yeah, I understand.
And then I thought that was the property that was up for sale with the lots.
It was, so, he did have his prop- Mr. Ramadan had the property for sale and it did appear to go under contract, I don't think it's closed.
Yeah, it's under contract, just haven't closed yet.
He's had it up for sale many times.
And it's, all the lots are attached to the property. So, I'm sure whoever is gonna pay that price, yeah, which is pretty significant, that they're probably wanna start to do some work on it and subdivide it and...
Sure.
Get all those lots built.
Sure. And that's why he won't fight you on the bond, cause he just put it in the sales price.
You got it, yeah. It was, it was a pretty nice sale price, right?
Well, who knows what he got for it?
We don't know what he got.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Do you guys like, any feedback?
Nope.
Anything for you guys?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we'll hate, wait to hear more at the next meeting about that. Okay, so, any A and Rs?
Nope, no A and Rs, no lot releases.
Okay, and then, um, we've got our meeting schedule next and then the ZBA meeting's on here. So, I guess as a board, we need to discuss how we wanna handle election of officers. Do you wanna talk tonight or do you wanna take this? Okay, okay. And then, or do you wanna wait until, cause what you have on here, the Worcester District Registry of Deeds form is where you put all your officers on that, is that correct?
Uh, no, not, actually, not on the office, the, not on the Worcester, um, deed. But I'm gonna hold off on that because, um, we have it written up as, with, um, it included the Teresa's name.
Okay.
So, we're gonna obviously modify that and we'll add the person's name and you can all sign that at the, at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, so we do know before June eighteenth, hopefully, we'll have some people from the public step forward and, uh, apply for the planning board. Um, so, we're hoping to have that. But, um, let's hear from the other board members on what you guys wanna do for election of office, officers.
Yeah, I thought we should elect the officers and go through the subcommittees.
Okay.
I don't know what Jordan wanna do it in, but I was thinking of going through the subcommittee that Teresa left, if nobody wanted it, the groundwater.
Okay.
But we can start with election of officers if you want.
How do you feel, Anthony? Do you wanna wait until we get a full board or do you wanna...
No, I think we should move forward.
Okay. Carrie?
Let's move forward.
Okay. Good night. Good night, thank you. So, the board has decided to move forward with the election of officers. Um, and then we would have to do the assignment of committees and, um, and then probably leave at least one committee for the new person, cause usually we give them, um, the regional space, right?
Yeah.
So, all right.
I make a motion that we, um, nominate Carrie Martinique for chair.
Second.
And then...
So, do we vote?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, do you want?
Or do I vote, too?
Do I make a nomination?
No, I was just gonna vote.
Oh. Obviously, vote for yourself. Okay, so...
Okay, so that, so just for, um, um, who, I'm, who made the motion?
I did.
Amy?
Amy made the motion. Um, Anthony seconded it and Carrie would like to move forward with voting for it. Okay?
Okay.
All in favor? Okay. And then now we go on to the committee assignments.
So, you need a, a vice chair?
A vice chair. We'd like to be the vice chair. Anyone wanna nominate a vice chair?
I make a motion to nominate, uh, Amy Poretzky for the vice.
Second.
You wanna be vice chair?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Try it.
All in favor of having Amy Poretzky as vice chair? Okay.
All right, and we, I just gotta catch up with you. Who made the, um, second?
I did.
Carrie did. And the motion was made by Anthony.
Yep.
And now we go on to, we, we don't have a secretary or anything like that?
Uh, no, you, no, we haven't done that in a while.
And then we go on to committee assignments and updates. So, we can start with, um, we're all on the committees, I'm on design review, um, Carrie, you're on.
CMRPC.
CMRPC. You're on?
CPC.
CPC, you're on?
Open space.
Open space and Teresa was on groundwater. Okay. So, does everyone wanna stay on their committees or do they wanna move around or what is, um...
I was hoping to try groundwater.
You wanna try groundwater? Okay.
I loved open space, so, but I, I wanna try, I've been on it for five years, so...
Okay, all right. Anthony?
So, I'll stay on CPC, but I'd also like to try open space. So, I'll stay on CPC, but I'd also like to try open space. And then, maybe the new person can take CPC when they come on board.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, let's see what everybody else wants to do. What would you like to do?
I really like CMRPC. If I, if it makes sense for a new person, that's okay, but I have really enjoyed it, so.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, uh, there's no, like, there's no right or wrong.
Oh, okay.
You know, so it's, um, it's not, it's not like you have to get on, I have to get off of it, or it's always goes to the new person.
Right.
So, it, it.
Okay, well, I really like it, so.
You're one of the first ones who's really liked it, so we're really happy about that.
Well, Carrie's been lucky that, um, there's a new director
Oh, okay.
at the Central Mass, Janet Pierce, and who's awesome. Um, she used to be the business manager for, for many years. Um, but when the, um, director retired, um, a couple of years ago, Janet was appointed as the director. And, um, they've increased their staff and they're, you know, they're very robust.
Yep.
So. They're good.
Um, I'd like to stay on design review. It's okay. Um, Anthony, you can choose between open space and CPC if you wanna do both. I mean, we'd like to give the other person who comes on an option.
Yeah, I'd like to get off one, but.
Get off one. Okay, all right. So, why don't we, what, what's your choice to stay on?
I think I wanna try open space.
Open space, okay. So, and you wanna try groundwater?
Yeah.
So, is it okay to leave, um, the CPC open for whomever might be nominated to come on for the first year?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can leave it open and then if that person, like, if they don't wanna be on it, you know, you don't, you don't want someone?
They don't even meet till November.
So, I used to be a CPC member. I'm happy to stay on it for a year until the person who's gets elected for a three-year term decides if they want. So, if that's opening, I don't mind to do both, 'cause I've done both of them before. But I'd rather if that person who gets, whatever, whatever happens on June 18th, give them an option if they wanna be on it.
And then if they don't wanna do it, you'll do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause I know the process and I was on there from the very beginning of the CPC.
Okay, and see, all right, so Amy groundwater, Carrie, Central Mass, um, Michelle, design review, open space, Anthony. You just missed a meeting last night.
Shoot.
July 22nd is the next one. Um, and CPC will leave open and if the new person doesn't, um, want that quite yet, Michelle will be.
Yep.
And I think, I don't, I feel like I'm missing one, but, um,
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I am.
What are the other ones we have? We have Earthworks and financial planning?
Well, those are not members of the planning board. Those are the two boards that you appoint, you have an appointee to it.
Right. But in the future, I'm not saying I want to now, but we could. Like, it's just, we just picked that 'cause nobody wanted to do it?
Gra- um.
In the past, Earthworks.
No, 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 someone, um, it's, it's not someone from this board.
Right.
You are the appointing authority for one member on each one of those boards.
Oh, but it could never be one of us.
Um, I, I.
I'm just curious.
I don't, um, I don't know. I mean, the, 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 the point is, is that you have a designate, you know, you appoint someone to that. That it's, it's not a, it's not a planning board person on it. You as a board, appoint someone to that.
Now, have they ever had a planning board person on the Board of Health? I just find sometimes, like, with the septic or anything.
Not here, no. No, they're an appointed board. I mean, they're not made up of other boards. They're, they're a completely separate appointed board.
I'm just curious.
Before, um, so the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Form is?
I'll, I'll have that updated for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, that's the one, uh, every year after the election, they send it out to all planning boards in Massachusetts. And so, we, you know, your signatures are on record.
Right.
And so, whenever a plan is, you know, filed, they, they do double check.
Yeah.
And make sure that the signature on the plan, the signatures on the plan match up with who that town is.
Okay. Um, and then, on the pleading, planning board schedule, we've already set it for the summer. The only request, and not that I really feel like going to more meetings during the summertime, but the only request that I was thinking of ma- about making possibly, and the board can discuss it at the next one, if maybe we added one extra in, 'cause I do feel like I wanted to talk about going to town meeting next year about maybe solar. We just don't have anything on there. And I know it's something that we're gonna have to research and sometimes we get so busy in the fall that, and I know John has a requirement to get everything in right around the Christmas time.
Yeah, we, I mean, once everyone kinda figures out their vacation schedules, or, um, you know.
Yeah, we've often, we had it on and it wasn't successful. I think it's probably the year. It was a very great presentation where they brought about the plastic bags and they talked about the environment and I actually think that it's probably time to maybe reconsider that if we wanted to and just take a look at breaking it down. I just figure it's gonna be a large bylaw that we're gonna have to do and maybe if we could just talk about our expectations and then segue into the fall with it. I mean, it's what the board is thinking, but I was thinking it's gonna take some time.
The fall comes around awfully quick.
It comes around quick and then before you know it, you gotta get everything sort of, you know, the bylaw ready and almost.
I mean, we may be able to do it, you know, w- we can see also what's happening with these meetings. Um, like, I don't have anything filed. They would've had to file this week to be on your June 18th meeting. So, I don't have anything. So, I mean, we may, you know, I mean, we can, we can talk about, um, you know, putting that on, on the agenda.
Could we just add bylaw, like zoning bylaws just in general, or do we have to list specific ones?
No, no.
No.
I mean, we can just always, you know, it's kinda just a rolling, you know.
Well, we could also just ask Kathy to do some research on surrounding towns on their, um, solar and see.
Yeah, there's, there's a model that the state recommends using, yeah.
We could take a look at that. And I think by the time you have several meetings and going through that with applicants and stuff like that, you can only work so much on it and then, you know, by the time you fine tune and get it ready and you want most of your content ready by December anyways, 'cause you gotta get it to the administrator by, well, the latest is February 1st, so it's sometime in January. So. That's one bylaw that I'd like to see brought forward for town meeting. I don't know if others have anything else.
I know one I was thinking of looking at the industrial bylaw, because there have been applications coming in front of the ZBA where they wanna put a gym in an old warehouse, but it's commercial. So, I think there should be certain commercial uses allowed in industrial. 'Cause industrial is kinda set now at the older industrial things, like trucking and factories and, but maybe there are uses, like, a lot of breweries now use the old warehouses to have these microbrews where they brew their beer, or a gym, or, like, just opening it up for more ideas, because people are coming in front of the ZBA asking to do that and they're like, you're the only town where we have to request this. So, I was thinking that maybe we look at the industrial zone and opening it up to some of the commercial uses.
And we started talking about that at the master plan, too.
We did, and they said to bring it back here, so.
Yep. Okay.
Yep.
Yep, and I will, um, I, I don't, the, the solar, well, not that the solar one's gonna be easy, but, but at least to provide you with the state model, that's gonna be easy. Um, and then, um, I can start to do some, um, you know, uh, digging around and, um, and actually even, like, tap into the master plan consultants to, the, those, the, the two that, those two gentlemen don't, there's someone else in their, you know, firm that does zoning. Um, so, maybe they can, you know, provide us with some initial information, um, about, um, commercial uses. Um, 'cause what I had, um, mentioned at the master plan meeting is, um, it's not, it's not always, um, you know, you, you, you just don't wanna automatically put, like, all your commercial uses into your industrial zone, because what, then you end up with is conflicts. And, and, uh, you know, the, the commercial use, like, say, if you allowed all commercial uses, so, you know, a new restaurant sets up and they're next to, um, I don't wanna name any one specific company, but they're next to a.
Shipping company.
Shipping company, you know, big cross dock facility. Well, they're gonna start complaining about the truck noise and the, you know, and the traffic and the, you know, the dust from, from it. And then, so you've set this conflict up. You know, you've, you, you've allowed it under your zoning, but now you've set this conflict up, um, between the two uses. So, what you need to do is, you know, look at specific uses that may be compatible. Um, or, and/or you can look at, um, doing an overlay district, um, so that you then look at, you know, use by use, whether it really makes sense in that, um, in that district and then you, uh, you know, vote on it specifically, um, whether it's as a special permit process or, so there's a variety of ways that we can look at, at doing that.
While you have the consultants, um, could you ask them about the hazardous waste bylaw, too? Because there's, you know, we've mentioned it in the master plan and maybe you could talk to them about it, 'cause I do know it's one of those uses in the state that it's allowed by, it's like an override. It's allowed in industrial, but some towns do make sure that, you know, it's further from a school or further from a house, or, I don't know, just to see, pick their brain while you have them to see if they have any recommendations while you're asking about the solar.
And then I think just the, the last thing on the agenda was, and Amy, I don't, you know, I don't know how, if you have any comments, but on the ZBA, Amy had asked me, you know, for some information on the ZBA applications that are coming up to the ZBA at the next meeting. There's five originally on the agenda, but one has withdrawn, even though he hasn't officially given me his, he's told me he's withdrawing. And he's, he sent us various, various staff, various emails, but I need an official email from him that he's withdrawing and so I'm still waiting for that. But, um, it, it looks like he's not gonna come to the meeting. Um, so otherwise, there's two, um, um, but, uh, garages having to do, you know, two residential uses that one wants to build, a bigger garage and one wants to rebuild his garage. And then, um, there is the, um, Central One Federal Credit Union down here on Main Street. Um, they want to replace their sign, uh, their existing freestanding sign. And what they, they, so they applied for variance, because what they wanna do is to put, um, they wanna use digital on part of their sign. Um, and as you know, that, you know, that was, you know, approved at town meeting. Do not have that in the, uh, commercial zone. And then, the fourth one is, um, uh, a, an applicant who, who has previously been before the zoning board of appeals, got a decision from the zoning board of appeals, um, actually had, he had a couple of different applications before the ZBA. And so finally, the ZBA said, you gotta, you gotta pick a use. You know, you're kind of all over the place with, you know, these uses that you're proposing for your property. It's a small piece. And so, he, he chose one use, which is the freestanding sign on Route 9.
Hmm.
Um, and, uh, so one of the conditions in the decision is that that's, that's the use for the property. And, um, now he wants to do something else on the property, um, in addition to the one use that he's allowed. So, he's coming back to the zoning board of appeals to ask for, um, a, a variance, so that he can do something else on the property.
At what point does he present what he wants to do?
He will be presenting to them.
To that, that night?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. It's conceptual. Hasn't meant a design review, hasn't, you know, so he's first seeing if he can get the, the decision changed. Um, and then he would have to go through
The whole thing.
the process. Yep, the whole site plan and design process. Um, so I believe it's an office building, a small office building, um, that he wants to do. I don't know the, the square footage of it yet or anything. Oh, so it's not that small? So, so those are the, those are the four that are before the, um, ZBA. So, I would assume you probably don't have any comment or opinion on garages.
Originally, I wanted to talk about 41 Talbit, because it was a site plan and usually we review those. But they're withdrawing. And, um, another comment I went and made, though, was on the sign, the electronic sign. Are they going for a variance now, because it was after town meeting? Like.
Yeah, that's, I think they applied for.
Well, the original application wasn't for electronic sign. And I asked from Bob about that and he said, oh, it's because they applied before town meeting. But it actually didn't get in.
No, I think they applied, um.
They applied for a change in size.
I think they, they applied for variance.
The original application I got was for a size change.
Um, this, this is the only one that I have, Amy.
Yeah.
It was submitted April 24th. Um, and it's to, um, replace the existing sign with a double-sided freestanding sign with changeable copy. Message area is consisting of electronic message board.
Okay, and the one I saw, and are they asking for a bigger sign, too? Well, it was, like, really small, but it was a large.
Um, they are asking for a variance of 1.52 square feet.
Yeah.
1.52 square feet. Um, and then.
Not much, no.
And then they're requesting a variance to increase the size of the sign by, the height of the sign by one foot, seven inches.
Okay, so they're asking for a specific variance to get the electronic to, like?
Yep.
Okay. And, um.
Which doesn't surprise me, because if you look at their model, I mean, they're, they're on Main Street and Shrewsbury. And Main Street and Shrewsbury, um, that's what they use at their bank right there.
But they're also on Main Street and Westboro and they don't allow it there, so, I mean.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that it's not surprising, yeah.
We just pass that as a planning board.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would actually want to write a letter as a planning board against allowing electronic sign, because the people just voted and we voted against it. And we actually started talking about it two years ago and then brought it on this year. And I don't, I just feel it'd be against the best interest of the town if they voted for it. So, I was just wondering if the planning board could write a letter stating, I don't know how you feel. I was gonna ask everybody else actually how they feel. But if anyone else agreed, I'd like to write a letter to the ZBA saying, I was not in support of that application, since it just went to town meeting. And the people voted. And how does anyone else feel about it?
I feel absolutely, that's what we should do.
Yeah, I do. I mean, it, just that by way of us, but literally, the, we literally just had it approved by us, town. I think that it would stand to have a reminder of that.
So, um, I was, I went along with the digital sign, but I also am always been concerned about whether these changes are gonna affect small businesses. And it's a bank. I would hate to see a bank leave Northborough, because, and I don't think they will, they have a huge presence in Northborough. But I get concerned and I, and I, and I said this, you can go back and watch the videos or do the, the, um, the minutes. I get concerned about when we start to address signage and it affects small businesses. It's sort of counterproductive to what our mission is from the master plan, which is to improve the businesses along Main Street, although I do agree with you. I don't know what, does, does Westboro have no digital signs within there?
I don't know.
I don't know. So, you know, um.
I think you see a lot of, a lot of surrounding towns are even going to the frontlit signs only for their main streets.
Yeah.
And are getting away even from the rear, uh, the rearlit signs and they're certainly not allowing the, the digital signs. So, I mean, I think that when you'll think about coming into town, people are concerned about the appearance of our downtown area. I think, I don't think those digital signs add something aesthetically pleasing to it. They may, you might look at it, because it's flashing in your face, but I don't, I don't think even like a, a bank or a small business is gonna get hurt by this. If you go down downtown Marlborough, for example, there's nothing that fronts lit signs now on their main street and it looks nice.
Especially 'cause it's way across from White Cliffs and they're, wanna bring that back to historical look and then you're gonna have a big sign lit up across the street. It just.
So, um, you know, I agree that we just went to town meeting with this and, you know, if the board wants to send a letter over, I'm fine with it. But I would be concerned if the board started to, you know, go a little further on, on the signage, 'cause I think, I don't wanna come across as the board actually starting to affect small businesses, 'cause when you're on Main Street, you're trying to attract the businesses to your business. And if we continue to limit it, um, I, that's my concern. But I've always said that along the way. I never changed that, you know. I, I'm not in favor of only having externally lit, that's why I asked Tim tonight, are you gonna be internally or externally lit for your sign? It's a preference on the landowner to decide what they wanna do, you know, and so, I think you can have both and they complement each other. But I do know that everyone has a concern about the digital signs. I think for a bank, they probably just like to have it up so they can advertise, you know, whatever product they're having out there, but, you know. I would just hate to see a business leave town because of it. Um, so I just wanna make sure we're not, you know, doing something where it's counterproductive with the master plan. That's my only thing, which is trying to bring businesses in. But, you know, I do know that we brought it to town meeting, so I think, um, we did bring it to town meeting, everyone voted. So, um, I just wanna voice my concern, 'cause I get sensitive when it comes to signs.
Well, I think there's also a component of safety. I believe right where that sign is, is a crosswalk the kids use to cross over. So, you know, to have an electronic sign while people are driving, seeing what the new interest rates are and people are trying to cross, I mean, it could be a danger.
So, it could be that we might have an issue with the digital part of it, but not the issue with the, the height or the other part of it.
Right.
You know?
I mean, that's, I guess, up to the ZBA. I'm just looking at what we passed as the bylaw.
Yes.
So.
So, what are you gonna do?
We could send a letter on from the board, just saying that we just passed the bylaw, um, that it was that, um, at town meeting where everyone voted in favor of not allowing digital and, in that area. And so, we'd ask them to take into consideration how in town meeting voted. Um, but you could, I don't know if you wanna add to it, that we don't have concerns over the size, because it's not like their scale is gonna be huge. I mean, it's pretty small when they ask about the size. But it may be, like Amy said, the size is related to they wanna go digital.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a concern of whether they want it internally lit or externally lit. I mean, that's an option where anybody can do that along Main Street.
Okay, so, so a, a statement from the planning board just saying that, that the new, not just, but, I mean, that the new bylaw was just approved at town meeting to not allow, you know, the digital lettering.
Yeah.
And that.
The electronic signs in general.
And you would, so you would recommend not approving that particular variance?
Yeah, for the electronic.
Right, but it's for the, they may want their sign to be a little bit larger, which I don't know how the other board members feel. I don't have a concern with that, because the size increase they're talking about is not huge. It's the digital part that people have concerns about.
Okay, so I'll be silent, I'll just leave it silent, I mean, I'll send this to you, but, you know, I'll just, again, it'll probably be like two sentences. But just the fact that you, you know, reminding about the new bylaw, and that you recommend not approving the variance related to the electronic message.
Yeah. Anything else for the ZBA?
Nope, I think that's it.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, make a motion to it during the meeting?
I'll make a motion. We're still moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
All right.